Thank you. Would you join us for the floor?
Two hundred and twenty seconds. In the time, in the physical, it's a routine that has been performed.
From Dixon Elementary School is at our public school. We have Miss Jimmy Breelbuck, Henry Dunn, Teagan Justice, Jackson Lane, and Yatselyn Ramirez.
I got it before you drop.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda, please. Actually, a clarification, but on item three C three, add the lighting at the Dixon County High School sports complex, the soccer field, Dixon Middle School. Those were all discussed at the work session, then through a vote. Project approved. Just want to go ahead and get the okay for the order be made to get those on the way.
We have any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve as amended and a second. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Give me a vote.
Six ayes.
Motion carried. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second, to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Opening is open. Six ayes.
Motion carries. Next, we have a public comment on actionable items. No sign up. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Next, we have recognitions.
Madam Chair, Lord, we have several things to celebrate tonight. We're going to start with our schools that are recognized as reward schools, schools that are recognized as level five schools, and schools that are recognized as A schools. As you know, the state has accountability, and through accountability, if you are a reward school, you rank in the top five percent across the state in the area that you represent, whether it be elementary, middle, or high school. We have level five schools. Those schools are recognized for their two years of growth. And then, we have schools that are getting better at getting better, and I like to celebrate that because when you get better, we all get better. And so tonight, I would like Dr. Misty Marvin, Dr. Cheryl Thiel, Ms. Melinda Fortner, Dr. Lucas Winstead, and Ms. Ernestine Adams to come forward to help recognize all of the schools that are within this accountability ranking. So we're going to start with our reward schools. Our first reward school is Stuart Burns Elementary School. Stuart Burns Elementary School not only is a reward school, it is a school that scored level five. And, they also brought their assistant principals and their instructional coaches, who are very instrumental in helping our teachers get better, and we appreciate their work. We're going to take a quick picture. We appreciate this leadership team. We appreciate our teachers and our students for this designation. I want all, everybody. Lucas. Congratulations. Our next school is Centennial Elementary. Centennial Elementary ranks as a reward school, a level A school, and a level five school.
Principal Harrison is brought with her.
That's okay. Thank you for being here. And let's get in that picture. Cheryl. Thank you for your work. Our next reward school, level five school and A school, Charlotte Elementary. And I had to say, her instructional coach was my first grader. Okay, y'all get in, get in. Thank you so much for your hard work. Our next reward school, A school and level five school, was White Bluff Elementary School. Ms. Leslie Christie is the principal. She's brought with her her assistant principal.
Jessica.
And Jessica Sutherlandson had an event, but we appreciate your leadership, teachers, and students. Thank you for your hard work. Our next reward school is Dixon Elementary School. Dixon Elementary School is not only a reward school, they're a level five school and an A school. Dr. Brown has brought with him his assistant principal and intervent- our instructional coach. Excuse me, I'm thinking of interventionist. Thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work. Our next school that leveled a level five school and the letter grade of an A is Burns Middle School. Burns Middle School's principal, Michelle Pryor, is with her AP. Ms. Allison Cruz, we thank you, your leadership team, teachers, and students for this award in recognition. Thank you. Congratulations. Now, I'm about getting better at getting better. And I want to celebrate Oakmont Elementary School. Oakmont leveled a level B. Thank you for your hard work. Come on up, Oakmont Elementary. Ms. Anita. Ms. Misty is six. I didn't know that. She sent me a text. We have Ms. Anita, the instructional coach. She's very instrumental in the happenings in leadership at Oakmont. And we thank her, the teachers, and the students for their work. Another school that showed getting better at getting better. So proud of these schools, Dixon Middle School. Principal Leslie Harrison is with her AP and instructional coach. And where's Kristen Faray, was a part of this? We are so proud of you for getting better at getting better. Discovery. And I want to acknowledge the Discovery School for getting a B on the state report card. Ms. Rachel Stormit. Congratulations. Thank you for your work.
Great work. Thank you.
And our final letter grade of a B was William James Middle School. Ms. Kristen Faray, the principal. And I also want to thank Ms. Jan Ford for her leadership. And thank you, Dr. Bradley, and all the teachers and students for their work. Thank you. Let's give them all a round of applause. At this time, I would like to recognize the Red Hawk bowling team. The Red Hawks were District 12 champions in Region 6, Division 1 boy state champions.
Thank you.
Got rid of all.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, guys. Congratulations again. Now, we'd like to recognize the Lady Red Hawks, District 12 champions, Region 6 champions, and Division 1 girl state runner-ups.
It's not like you don't got.
Getting the two of them.
I think tonight's a good night to be a Red Hawk, don't y'all?
Tonight sounds like it to be a Red Hawk.
They both.
Oh, you can.
I think it's just.
Madam Chair. Hey, girls. And I think the boys, if they can hear me back there too, every time a state champion of any kind or anybody that makes it to a state championship of any kind, I always want to tell them the same thing. And that no matter what sport you're playing or what level you're playing on, anytime you can win a state championship or make it to a state championship and win regions and stuff like that, it's always a big deal. And you're the best in the states, and I just wanted to take congratulations to y'all.
Our next recognition are two of our teachers from Creekwood. And so I would like to ask Mr. Andrew Scott and Luke Williams to come forward with Ms. Polly Spencer. I received an email from Ms. Polly that a Ms. Julie Trapp out of North Carolina sent an email of gratitude on behalf of Mr. Williams and Mr. Scott for all of the things that they did to help her family in the Hurricane Helen event. And so we want to honor you tonight and say thank you. Thank you for being superes, and for me, that is going above and beyond. Thank you. No. Thank you so much.
And those are the students.
And that concludes recognitions for tonight.
Now, we're going to have the student board representatives.
He's getting you a mic.
Additionally, senior superlatives. Oh, there it is. Additionally, senior superlatives were announced this past week. And DCHS leadership has kicked off the exciting 50-day countdown until graduation today. Tonight, the talent show will showcase incredible student performances. And the drama club is thrilled to announce that the dates for their highly anticipated spring musical, Mamma Mia, which will take place on March 28th, 29th, 30th, and then again on April 4th, 5th, and 6th. FFA has successfully wrapped up their strawberry sale and is eagerly preparing for their plant sale in April. Beta Club members are looking forward to competing at the UT Martin Parsons Academic Bowl next Friday. And we wish them lots of luck. The Cougar basketball team is excited to play their second district game tonight against Kenwood and will play their first regional game on Saturday. The Lady Cougar basketball team was named the fourth wait, that's not right. Sorry. Was named AAA district runner-up and will host their first regional game tomorrow night at 7:00 PM against Kirkwood. And we hope to see all of you there. The Cougar soccer team will kick off their season next Tuesday after two exciting preseason games this week. The Cougar baseball and Lady Cougar softball teams have both started their seasons with scrimmages and play days, and their regular season will begin next week. And we are thrilled to announce that Dance Off in the Den is back for its 11th year. And we hope to see everyone at one of the two showings on April 25th or 26th. Proceeds will benefit the Child Advocacy Center and support improvements to DCHS. If you're interested in becoming a sponsor, please let me know. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortner. Good job. Ms. Paul.
Good evening, members of the school board and audience. Let's just jump right into the happenings at Creekwood High School. In sports, basketball is looking forward to starting their region tournament at home with girls playing tomorrow and boys playing Saturday, both games starting at 7:00. Flag football has started their season with close to 30 girls on the team. Boy soccer is kicking off their season. They've had a few scrimmages. Baseball and softball have started practicing and scrimmaging. And softball will be traveling to Smyrna High School for a tournament this weekend. Tennis has started practicing and will have their first matches starting next week. We wish the best of luck to all of our spring sports. And the football program is beginning spring workouts for the upcoming season today. In academics, juniors take the ACT on March 11th, and sophomores will be taking the ASVAB. CTE classes visited the Be Pro, Be Proud campaign. This campaign seeks to bring new generation of pride, progress, and professionals to America's skilled workforce. Creekwood's Top 10% was announced on February 5th. Creekwood's valedictorian is Ava Beckwith, and salutatorian is Gabby Mann. Juniors recently participated in an ACT pep rally to get pumped for their upcoming ACT. And students are preparing for EOC testing that will begin early to mid-April. We are so proud of the tremendous effort being given by our students and teachers. General news at the Wood. Senior superlative voting was yesterday. Those were announced today. Seniors are counting down the days to graduation. Today was day 49. Clinicals are rotating job sites next week on Monday, March 3rd, and they'll be taking the medical assistant certification exam in two weeks. Creekwood youth leadership applications will be opening up for potential students beginning next week. And as always, it's a great day to be a Red Hawk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Good job, ladies.
Next, under curriculum.
Madam Chair, Board, you will see the Dixon County school calendar for the 26-27 year. We've had discussions at our planning sessions. I am asking that you approve this calendar for the 26-27 school year.
Mr. Parker?
Just are we getting out of order, or did the lady not show up to speak?
No.
Perfect, okay.
We have a motion to approve the 26-27 academic calendar, and we have a second. Do we have any other discussion? Vote, please. It was yours.
Six guesses.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have.
Next, we have a conversation and approval of the Therapy Dog, Mia Murphy. Is Mia back there with Dr. Johnson? There we are. Dr. Johnson, do you have anything that you would like to add? We thank Caitlin Murphy, and we see that Mia is here. I have attached our Therapy Dog Program letter along with the Student Participation Consent Form that Mr. Hall looked at and helped us write. The certificate that Mia Murphy, the dog, received, and you see all of her certification and insurance along with her identification badge in the back. So, Dr. Johnson.
Mia is straight out loud. As you can see, she's very comfortable.
Feeling very therapeutic tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to ask for final approval on the letter that is before you. With that approval, what we would propose is getting the letter out to students and to families right away so that Mia can begin spending some time in the schools prior to the end of the school year. You can see in that letter that we've just adjusted a little bit of the wording per some of the suggestions that were made at a previous board meeting, and we feel like we're ready to go. She's definitely ready to go. Yeah, but we thank you for the consideration on the approval.
We thank you for your hard work on getting your dog Mia certified. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's true.
Yes, Mr. Parker?
So, like, in the little, looks like a little license.
You want to see it?
No, I got a picture of it right here. Is it a requirement to give the dog a last name? I don't know that.
No.
Okay. Just, I don't hear very many last names on dogs, but I like it. I like it. You don't see many dogs with the last name?
Yeah. Are there other questions that we might answer for you?
What's the recommendation of the administration?
I recommend Mia to be a part of our family. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add Mia to our family. Any other discussion? Vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mia is very comfortable.
Next, we have finance.
Ms. Lighting.
I think lighting's supposed to go under maintenance.
Ms. Valerie. Ms. Valerie will be presenting the financial statements.
Hey, the first page is just this typical summary that you all see. Revenues are up as compared to last year. Expenditures are also up as compared to last year. Property tax and sales tax are both up compared to last year at this time. Utilities are up at this time, and diesel fuel and gasoline are both down.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Haley.
So, with the showing the revenue increase, seeing that the property tax is close to the same, and sales tax, they're both increased a small amount. The largest part of that is going to be state funding, TISA funding make up that difference? Is it up quite a bit?
I'll have to check.
That's really the last major part besides the sales tax and property tax is the TISA funding, right?
Yeah, and I can pull that from what it was last year.
Is it probably more of a, have they changed the timing they send revenues in?
Not for TISA. Uh-uh. No, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. I had asked about how much money we had left in the 177 account. Do you have that number?
Uh, yes, I emailed it to you earlier. I'm sorry.
Okay, I had looked at that. Let me look at it, and I'll tell you all how much we've got left in there. Sorry, uh, yes. Let me get it open. Sorry about that. Okay, so it doesn't have the difference. But so far, what we have, what we have... Is the 1.2 million what we have?
Yes, ma'am.
We're showing, okay, so 1,276,609.76 is what we have left in there.
That's using that estimate from the DCHS Sports Complex because Mr. Corle didn't have, like, exact numbers, obviously, at this time. So... And you are right. I did look, Mr. Haley, at the TISA, and last year at this time, we were at about 31 million. And this year, we are at, well, 32.6. So, it's a little bit elevated.
I was thinking maybe it's more of a timing issue. It's not a pretty big increase in revenues, so it had to be more of a timing thing, as well.
Have any other questions on the financials?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve the monthly financial report.
Thank you.
Vote, please. Hold on, it's not appearing on my screen. I've got to scroll up. I'm not seeing it on my screen.
Bill, what is your vote?
It's a yes, but I'm having to log back in. Okay, thanks, because I scrolled down in the... Motion carried. Next, we have maintenance. First item is Stuart Byrne's bid. Mr. Clifton?
More members tonight in front of you is the bid. I think you have the bid tab from Lyle Cook-Martin. Suggestions been Dixie Roofing, the low bidder, at 1,435,935 dollars. If you notice out in the right-hand column, that does carry a $5 linear foot price on wood nailers as they take the old roof off if they find it damaged. They got a bid at $5 a foot, but that number's already built into the contingency money they have inside the 1.4.
Ms. Phil?
Um, I did some checking on Dixie Roofing, and according to the Better Business Bureau, they had a C-plus rating. Is that, has that been updated?
So, I don't know, and I don't know if it's the same one. This is, this is the four contractors. It was vetted out by the panel.
So, it could be perhaps a different... Mr. Parker?
What's the CBC check mark that they're missing right there?
Criminal background check, and they left that out of their bid packet when they turned it in. I immediately told Mr. Hall. I think he said that was considered a technicality, and they provided them that document, I believe, within one hour, and he said that was satisfactory. Let Mr. Hall comment on anything else about that.
Thank you.
That's correct. More members, I did talk to Mr. Clifton and Mr. Lyle. As soon as this irregularity was there, when, when we bid it, we retained the right to accept or reject all the bid after the pre-qualification process. And because it was a technical omission, they had everything on the outside of their bid envelope correct. It's just what was inside the envelope, and they provided it to me.
That's true.
Mr. Parker?
So, and this is just from my own knowledge. When we went and, let's, let's back up to a bid that we would have done a couple of years ago. We would have just put it out there, and anybody could have done it, but these are actual people that are 100% qualified to do it.
That's the way the panel saw it when they were judged, yes.
So, previously, before we started doing that, anybody could have bid on it and got the low bid and may not have had the equipment to do it or something. Would that be something, something of that nature?
Could be a difference in...
But these are definitely qualified people.
That, that was to try to get you a, a list of bidders to bid on that work. And of course, that was advertised for, for folks to submit to that as well.
And if I might add, Mr. Clifton, the other reason you do that, Mr. Parker, is because truly qualified bidders, if you don't do a request of qualifications, they won't, they won't take the time, or the energy, or expend the money to do the bid process because they know they're not going to come in as a low bidder because you're going to have unqualified bidders that are going to undercut the bid. And, and so this is a way to make sure you get the best bidders on the front end.
Thank you. And the recommendation from the administration is going to be the low bid?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Have any other questions for Mr. Clifton?
Move to approve low bid Dixie Roofing at 1.435,935, as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Dixie Roofing.
I need to clarify that, please. Mr. Hall, I think I need to make this contention on County Commission of approving the funds through our reserve. I'll make that change on my motion.
Well, may I ask a question? That was part of the reason that...
After the second, I'm sorry. It's the second.
Sorry, I'll second it with the change.
Ms. Phil?
Oh, well, I was just wondering, since we have the 1.2 million remaining, you'd rather go to the County Commission for this and use that other money for the upgrades at Dixon Middle? Is that what you're thinking?
If you're asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
Absolutely, because we have 1.2 million remaining, and this bid's 1.4. We would have to go for the difference. And also, the resolution did not allow for this roofing project to be in that resolution for the 15 million. And the third point, while it shows 1.2 remaining, there is some contingent expenses that haven't been tidied up yet, mostly design fees. So, I really, while there is some money left, it was kind of done intentionally on the, on the 177 fund because we start the projects, I think we're going to have some expenses involved in that that are probably going to cause, take most of that balance, just 110%.
Have any other comments or questions? Vote, please. Motion carried. Next, we have maintenance.
Maintenance line item.
Mr. Gerald?
So, on the maintenance line items, I was just asked to turn in a description on the 399 line item. So, that paperwork's presented in your documents you have. I'll attempt to answer any questions you have. I'll attempt to answer them tonight. If I don't have it tonight, we'll reply.
Any questions over the maintenance line item 72620-399?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton.
Next, we have lighting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Haley?
On, on the item I had to add, last month, we approved the scope of expenses, the projected expenses for the project at the Dixon High School Sports Complex Soccer Field. Some of the remaining Dixon Middle School items for the, we call it the 177 fund. It's the resolution project. And in that, included three fields with the lights. After speaking to Mr. Corle this afternoon, understand that getting those lights ordered is going to be a key factor in, in the timing of this project. And with the lighting being a Sourcewell bid, we're waiting for the bids to approve for the final numbers on the other projects. But since it's a Sourcewell, we have those numbers, and Mr. Porter can present those numbers. Do you have them with you? And with those numbers already being placed by Sourcewell, I wanted to have that added to the agenda so we can get those ordered. We won't be delayed in the project with lighting. Especially at the middle school, their lighting is non-functional. It failed last year before the last game. A label will be repaired. It had to be addressed either way. So, get them all three at one time, get the equipment ordered.
Yeah, that, that particular field, Dixon Middle, it's got to be relit before the season starts because they've got considerable number of the lights are out, and they can't even get them working. I'll start with that one. Sourcewell price was 189,000 on that field. They've got to actually pull some wire on that job because some of the wiring's bad. The other one is the existing soccer field over here. It's 124,600 dollars. And, and I've got a question on this one. Sourcewell gave a price for 280, 289,000. But they put an adder in here for a custom color lighting. Now, the lights are coming, coming out now to most of the schools now that are flashing. If you have a touchdown, they flash. Well, that's, that's not a custom. They've added color to it. So, I don't know if you all want to approve color flashing lights. It was 30,000 dollars. So, I didn't think you would want to. The, the regular flashing comes with them, but not color flashing.
Asgill was two, the Sports Complex field was 289?
Yes. That's including the 30,000 for color.
759.
Yeah.
Is these, these are the same lights that we just put on both our softball fields and our baseball field?
Yes.
Same, same lights we've been using?
Yeah, only these have 30-foot candles alight where the baseball and softball have 40 because of the ball.
Right, got you. Thank you.
Yeah. Most of your schools don't have color lighting. I mean, they, you know... Most of your schools don't have color lighting. I mean, they, you know, M B A, B G A.
So so they're going to come flashy, just not with color. I'm colorblind. I make a motion to approve without color.
The two hundred and fifty nine thousand.
Yes.
Okay. I figured you all would say that.
You clarify your motion, Mister Parker. That are you going to make a motion for all three fields at one time?
Bills and the prices for each one.
I'm going to retain my motion until this question answered. Yes.
Price for each one?
If you don't mind.
Okay, the high school football field, two hundred and fifty nine thousand. Dixon High School, existing soccer field, hundred and twenty four thousand, six hundred. Dixon Middle School, a hundred and eighty nine thousand.
And is that because you're thinking they're going to pull some wire at Dixon Middle or something?
Dixon Mills are going to require additional work rather than just the lamps. Yeah.
Yeah. Move to approve all three.
Second.
We have a motion to approve all three lightings at D C H S Soccer and D M S. Any other questions?
I'll say.
Vote, please. Six eyes. Motion carries, Mister Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules in a second. Vote, please. Second carries, and Thiel. Thank you. Six eyes. Parker.
Madam Chair, I want to I I just maybe Mister Corle can give us this update or him, we could talk about it and if it's something that maybe we can add to it as an actionable item, but the the bathrooms at the that we were talking about moving. It was first, it was moving some doors around, and then now we got to get A D A compliant, and I didn't know if there was a price on that or a timeframe on that as the season was starting.
Uh, yes, Mister Clifton and myself and a contract local contractor went up there and made went get a thorough inspection of it. Uh, and we found a lot more items that need to be repaired other than what I told you all before. I think I told you probably thirty thousand dollars. When we found out that we got to move light switches, we got to add fire alarm devices, we've got to add exhaust fans. Uh, one of the doors that I thought was a three O door is a two eight, which is not handicapped, so it's got to be taken out. So I got a price here of, and this is just an estimate. Uh, it was about fifty five thousand.
If we said fifty five thousand a day, could you do it? How far, what timeframe do you think it would be?
Well, we've got to draw it for.
Okay, so it's.
It's got to go to state fireworks.
Not going to happen this season.
No.
We got existing bathrooms. Can we not put a door on it and let?
But they're they're using them now. The first ballgame there yesterday before.
Day before.
Yeah.
They're they're definitely using.
They're using.
They're definitely using them bathrooms. There's a door on it where people can go in.
But there's no side. Well, we added the side more than that fifty.
Quite honestly, the current bathroom we got is not only non A D A compliant, it's not really very compliant for for regular humans that don't that walk and are very healthy, can't get down there very good. So I think what we as long as we're using them and we're in good shape, then I I think I'm okay as long as they're usable.
Miss Thiel.
Well, I I'm just wondering about the sidewalk. Is the sidewalk to those restrooms something that we could move forward on this season, or is that is that not possible either?
If you all tell us, we can get a contractor to do that. That was.
I think a sidewalk would be less than the money that it would take.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mister Haley.
Just for the public clarification, we talked about the bathrooms not usable and inaccessible. It's two sets of bathrooms. The bathrooms that that we originally spoke of are the ones they were using at the field that were tied to the field house. Those were uh, no question inadequate. Uh, I think we all came to where that recently. The ones that we asked Mister Cor to look at are actually in the building on the third baseline that were accessible distance wise, and that's what Miss Thiel's talking about, a sidewalk to access those. So I think the original even thought it was discussed in the last month. It's just an idea to try to get bathrooms for the ball season. There are adequate bathrooms in that building. The fact that we're going to have to do all these changes to get to it raises a question whether we would decide if we want to spend the money or not, but now that there is a door that accesses them and it is unlocked, the issue I think this whole time is those doors weren't being unlocked. So I'm glad they opened them, and with them open, we may or may not do the other work, but it wouldn't happen during this season anyway because of the work level. The whole point of the wall up inside the hallway is to segregate the bathrooms from the rest of the building. But walking through the hallway, all those classrooms are locked up, so you can literally leave the door unlocked, access the bathrooms by doing nothing. Even we may choose to to make it to segregate it, but as Miss Thiel's saying, there is no sidewalk to that, and that would fall under the limitations of what the director can approve and would be a great improvement and could be carried out without this board taking the action to do it. Should she see fit that that would need to be done to make it more accessible, and I think that that a lot of us have shown that we would agree it needs to be accessible with a sidewalk along with other options up there. So not trying to confuse, but to clear it up, the sidewalk is definitely something that she can do.
Yeah, I just. I wanted to just make sure that we were able to use them. We have doors on them, and if, you know, in the future, if we need to move light switches and do all that other stuff, we can do that, but as long as it's February now, they're started, they have they have access to a bathroom, and that's the main thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can use them now. I would recommend that you make the improvements.
Yes, sir.
And I'd make, I'd recommend that you put the get the door in there separating it from the school.
Yes, sir.
Because you'll have people, kids, running all throughout that location.
Right, and I'm 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 fine with like, as long as it's not going to happen this season, because like I say, you ain't you ain't you get, we ain't got too much left and you you draw if you get if you got to draw in a month and we approved it the next month, it season will be over, so it would be definitely something we can look at until uh, for next season, or if we don't move even further with something there, but so thank you, Mister Jeff. I'd like to make a mo- motion to.
But sidewalk could be done this season.
Yeah.
Claire, we do that. I just want to make sure that we are going to move forward. I mean, I realize that's something that you can make that decision on.
Yes, I agree with you a hundred percent. It does need to be done. Yeah.
Okay.
And there are, there is one handicap hall in each of those, although we have one where it's narrow.
Yeah, temporarily, it's not going to be accessible to the to the women. Uh, and I'll tell you, actually, by doing this, uh, we had in your original numbers, we gave you on the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
There was a hundred and ten thousand dollars set up there for that restroom that's in the hole down below.
Yes, sir.
So you're actually saving money from what you originally thought.
Thank you.
Getting a lot better.
Yes, thank you.
Motion to go back to regular session.
Motion to uh, return to regular session in a second. Vote, please. Motion carries. Next, we have human resources.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Miss Hillary Hall will go over the human resource report for the current month.
So, board members, you do have the human resource uh, report for February. So those listed items of our retirements, resignations, leave of absence, and I'm sorry. Our hires, transfers, assignments, and reassignments. Then we also have, excuse me, the exit report for the prior month, the month of January. Are there any questions over that? So the next item that I have are the uh, job descriptions, and we went over these in planning sessions, so they are all there except for three. Three of those we pulled out to make some clarifications and some adjustments that were on those, and those three are the C T E Director, the Chief Academic Officer, and the Transportation Director. So those changes that you requested, we made, we have done so, and they are all there except for those three.
All the same as they was in the planning session?
Except for the.
Except for them three.
Yes, sir.
Willing for approval, Madam Chair?
Yep. Yes.
Make a motion to approve the job descriptions.
I'll second. A motion to approve the job descriptions as presented in a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? Vote, please. Six eyes. Motion carries. Doctor Sutherland.
Madam Chair, board members, I would like to read the retirement list. Wendy Jackson, fourth grade teacher at Stewart Burns Elementary, twenty four years. Ray LaCombe, C T E Director, Central Office, twenty seven years. Cheryl Pierce, Special Education Interventionist, Burns Middle School, fourteen years. Martha Martin, Related Arts, Burns Middle School, eighteen years. Rita McClurkin, C T E Teacher, Burns Middle School, forty four years. Winnie Smith, Special Education Teacher, Stewart Burns Elementary, twenty seven years. Connie Sullivan, Payroll, Central Office, twenty six years. Sherry Turnbull, English Language Arts Interventionist, Van Lear Elementary School, twenty six years. I want to thank each of these teachers for their dedication and hard work uh, that they have given with the Dixon County Public School System. Much appreciated, and we wish them well.
Thank you. Next, we have school nutrition, equipment repairs.
Madam Chair, board, this was a request to um, that Miss Thiel had regarding looking at items that needed to be outsourced. Um, I would ask Mister Troy Williams if he has a, he would like to make any statements regarding the sheet. You will see that uh, we had for this month, one outsource, and it was one hundred and forty six dollars. Um, I have to say that when you look at this, and when I was looking at it, you will see the materials and resources that in parts that he has to purchase. But when you saw the sum of labor, you will see that most of this, if not all, are maintenance men covered, and it brought back some conversations that we are having to use some of uh, our maintenance men to come over and work in our school nutrition department. We do appreciate that, Mister Clifton, in allowing that to happen uh, for our school nutrition, but you can see school nutrition keeps us very busy uh, because things just break and tear down. Mister Williams, do you have any comments regarding any of that?
Oh, well, I I mean, I I appreciate the maintenance program we're doing for the labor because if of our cost of uh, outsourcing, if we had to outsource all of this, it would be a lot more and uh, it'll come back. You know, if we can't beat our budget, and we had a lot of repairs this year, and this goes back uh, for the whole year, I believe, and uh, and if we had to price that for the whole year, it would uh, be a a great burden for us, but at the end of the the year, if we cannot meet our budget, it will come back to the uh.
System.
To the system.
Right. Okay.
So I do appreciate uh, Gerald and the the maintenance crew for all the things that they do.
Thank you, Mister Williams.
Next, under transportation, we have the School Bus Ride Magazine.
Well, I have to say, uh, I would like to congratulate Miss Melissa Garten. She was featured in the Bus Ride Magazine, and um, anyway, it's a um, really good picture. I will send it to you. It kind of got cut off, but we appreciate the work that Melissa does. She is known throughout the state of Tennessee and the work that she does. We have people all across the state call and ask her expertise around resources, what she buys, how can she help them with any kind of bus problem, getting students to and from school? So um, she makes Dixon County look good, and I appreciate you, Melissa. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair. You had the uh, like a date for the driver competition? And uh, one comment about her recognition, she's not only recognized, but she's um, highly thought of amongst the state, and I see that since she's renewed that certificate, that's good for what, ten years? Great news. I'm about to say congratulations.
Thank you, Miss Melissa.
Next, we have field trips.
Madam Chair, we have uh, Creekwood High School, host of leadership going to Chattanooga. The Jag Tennessee, our C T E headed to Murfreesboro in March. Our Creekwood C S M to Tennessee Tech in April, the Steam X Competition. Dixon County High School Choir Music headed to Gaylord Opryland. Dixon County High School State Leadership Conference in April. Our annual J R O T C Cadet Leadership Camp happening in Greenville, Kentucky. Dixon County High School Track Meet in Murray, Kentucky. Dixon County High School Track Meet in Benton, Kentucky. Dixon Middle School, Burns Middle School, and Dixon County High School Band Reward Trip to Holiday World in Santa Claus, Indiana. That's it.
Passed over Creekwood High School softball trip.
Oh, did I? Creekwood Softball, Miss Nancy Jackson, March twenty first, Chattanooga. Are there questions in regards to any of those trips? It's before that CSM, I remember reading it. Oh, the STEAM, okay, yeah, STEAM.
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve the field trips that were mentioned in a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion?
No competitions are important and so forth. I would just like to ensure that the coaches keep up with the academic of their players.
That is
It's just 49 more days until I'm going to be graduate.
Absolutely. Dr. Marvin, I know that you know all things about what happens in secondary. And I know that these students have to show their teachers that they qualify. And so all of these students are passing.
The teachers have to sign off.
Yes. And so I am very proud of all the students that get to participate in extracurricular, and they keep up with their grades. And so we're very appreciative of that. Yes, thank you, Dr. Marvin.
Next, under administrative, we need to vote first, don't we?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have policies.
So the three that we have for second read were approved last month for first read. We want to vote on those as a block or individually.
Were there any changes made to these?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve all three as a block on the second read.
Motion to approve policy 1.201, 2.806, and 6.408 on second read.
Second the motion.
Mr. Chauvin?
Mr. Chauvin can second.
Vote, please.
Six ayes.
Motion carries, next, we have first read policies.
The first one is 3.205 for security. Mr. Hall reviewed that and revised the language that you see reflected in BOE Connect.
New policy, or is this an addition?
It's an addition. We've had 3.205, so the changes are just what's struck out in the red.
It's the same as it was.
Meaning, okay.
Question? Notice in the planning period, but did we drop illegal entry?
We did.
Okay.
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Williams?
And Mr. Hawley, I would think, the language that is chosen, is that something that that we've written or that was recommended by someone? And Mr. Hall directed red line largely to line 20, where it says, "Or use of a weapon." It just seems a little subjective to what would be considered a weapon. Though it needs to have some flexibility, but I think the flexibility might go both ways.
Well, the prior policy said involving the use of the weapon, but it wasn't clear whether you had to have serious personal injury. But I understand the point. I'm open to suggestions on how, if you want to further define weapon, or I mean, I think it's
Hard to do, isn't it?
It's hard to do, because when you start saying, well, this is a weapon, that's a weapon. But, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable person's standard of this was a weapon. You know, because you could take a pair of scissors that are sharp, pointed scissors, and those could be used as a weapon. Well, if you sharpened it down
I think it gets right back to where we discussed the SROs in one of the work sessions, I think it's at Burns. And while I certainly appreciate what they do, I'm very glad we have them. There was a time we didn't. There's always that line between when you're an officer and when you're an SRO. And I see the intent and the need, and that might be the only wording we have, but does it create a weapon in itself in words?
Well, and that's the word that's in the statute, so I'm sort of bound by
That's why it's where it came from, yeah.
Yeah.
In that case, I'm gush, wanted to state the point anyway.
Ms. Thiel?
Mr. Hall, you know, at the Burns meeting, you spoke about the SROs and how, what their role is and how we are, we sometimes use them. And that's not the appropriate way to use an SRO. I didn't see any language in here that you changed that clarified that more. Or can you point me to where you think, to the, where I should be reading that it addresses your concern when you shared that information with us?
Well, the, if you go to the, I guess it's the second page under the heading of School Policing's on page one, and then you get over to the page that really deals with SROs. And part of the, part of the issue is still is the state, when they started contributing money for districts to have SROs, created a standard memorandum of understanding that all school districts are now required to use. And so we're really sort of governed by that memorandum of understanding. And this, this page reflects that memorandum of understanding. And so, to the extent that the school resource officer is acting under the course and scope of his memorandum of understanding, then, then that's what we're doing. I think I, I think I tried to address some of the issues that I talked about at the planning session in the red line that occurs up in and I see a typo now in line 22, could be May instead of Ma, but there, there is some leeway there that is given to the principal in that section that that tries to address that. Did that answer your question, Ms. Thiel?
Um, I guess, the best I can understand. I just, I knew that you had that concern, and after you shared that, I guess I kind of understood your concern, and I wanted to make sure that we were helping our principals understand how SROs should be used. And so I thought if it were outlined clearly in this policy, then they would understand that they're not necessarily the the disciplinary in, in the, in the building.
Right, and I, I think that's more of a procedural issue that Dr. Winsted and Dr. Sutherland can deal with secondary and then other principals on, on the procedural aspects of it. Because we are constrained by the state-issued MOU.
And we have had those meetings, Mr. Hawley has met with SROs and administrators. And if you want any further details, just call him, yes.
Thank you.
We have any other questions about 3.205 security? We have a motion to appro, do we want to do these separately?
Yeah, so move, Madam Chair, on the first read.
I can second to approve 3.205 on second read.
Did I say second?
No, you said first.
I said, okay.
I just listened there and
I said first, they said.
We have a motion in a second to approve 3.205 security on first read. Vote, please.
Six ayes.
Next, we have 4.201.
Yes, the basic program, and if you remember, this was an option TSB A gave us to include verbiage about not exceeding class sizes, class size limits. We took that out and we'll make it a separate policy. So this just deals with basic program. And again, Mr. Hall reviewed it and added a couple of, a few words there in line two and line 13. But again, this was the same as it was in the planning session.
I have to approve policy 4.201.
Second.
We have a motion to approve policy 4.201 in a second. Any other comments? Vote, please.
Six ayes.
Motion carries, next, we have 4.209.
This is a required policy, we do not currently have. Again, Dr. Marvin has reviewed it and said it matches our current practices. We just did not have a policy that reflected that. It's the same again as what we saw in, at the planning session, and it's TSB A's model policy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second for policy 4.209. Vote, please.
Six ayes.
Motion carries, next, we have 5.118.
Ms. Hall gave you some information about the rat-back program at the planning session. And so we've revised this policy to reflect that we have implemented that rat-back program.
Move to approve 5.118, background investigations.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve 5.118, background investigations. Do we have any other comments or questions? Vote, please.
Six ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Winsted.
Thank you, Dr. Winsted.
Next, we have the Dixon County School Organizational Chart.
Madam Chair, board members, I shared this with you at our planning session and then at our meeting yesterday, planning session. The only change that is on this is if you look under Student Service Safety Director, you will see that I added boxes, that you will see the individuals that fall under. That is Mr. Joey Hawley under the safety there. Are there any questions in regards to this organizational chart?
Need to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve organizational chart as presented.
Second.
A little discussion on it.
Okay.
I think I asked this question the other day, and I know it makes it very symmetrical to put it the way that it is. But just DLA and NDA having elementary school kids in them.
Yes.
Would our elementary's director have a little say-so over that? Or does all that, does DLA and NDA go to straight secondary director? Even if NDA or DLA has elementary kids in it?
Both of those directors, Dr. Marvin and Ms. Fortner, have say-so over what goes on at NDA. And I could move NDA over here.
No, it's very symmetrical the way you got it.
Okay.
I kind of figured that, it looks good the way you got it, I just
Yes, and that's, that's a really good question, and yes, and for some others that are looking at that, they may wonder that question as well. But yes, we do have elementary students at NDA, first through 12th grade, and so, yes. But they will work with that. You will see that there are multiple directors involved in that. Mr. Ray LaCombe, Dr. Thiel, I mean, almost every one of our directors, Dr. Johnson, they all touch NDA.
Thank you. Most, we don't, we don't
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Thiel.
Um, I'm just wondering, since you moved student support specialists and the SROs over to the first page?
Yes.
I'm wondering if that could be eliminated on the second page?
The reason that I placed him there was to make sure that safety is risen to the top. Whenever I am out of the office, you will see that the Chief Academic Officer and the Safety Student Support Director are in charge of the district. And so the reason that I have him or that position at that level is just due to that and how safety is in the district. It's not that anyone is not important, but safety is
Right. I just, since it's, I, I understand.
You're just asking about it being on both pages.
Yes, I just didn't know.
And you will see that the Senior Director of Academics, the, the page where she is omitted, that's because I use her for instruction only. Yes.
We have any other questions or comments on the organizational chart? Vote, please. Motion carries, next, we have Director's Report.
Thank you. Madam Chair, board, it has been very busy, as always. You will get a copy of our second newsletter Monday. We are wrapping that up. Our parent-teacher conferences are currently going on throughout the district. We had over 100 families for our United Way Family Night at the YMCA on Tuesday. We had a wonderful transition meeting that Dr. Melissa Johnson headed with her team, and it was wonderful, the community partnerships. I know that Ms. Lamplie attended that. It was well-attended, a lot of great information. We had community partners, we had higher ed partners, lots of partners there, lots of community folks there. It was really nice to see. Our kindergarten readiness meetings are happening throughout the district. Ms. Andrea Bobian is working hard with those, they have been well-attended. And we appreciate our families coming out to support all of these information nights. It's very difficult. We have lots of students playing spring sports, so we have parents going in many directions. But we appreciate them coming out to hear what Dixon County Schools has to offer. Next Tuesday, I will be meeting with our community, community leadership team, and we always have a good meeting with them. Currently, we have 17 on that committee. So lots of things happening. I did share yesterday, but I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Ben Buckner, who provided these books for engineering to our second these books for engineering to our second graders. This is Lucy's Engineering Adventure, and it's a wonderful book, but all of our second grade students will receive this. It's nice to see a little girl as one of our engineers. And so we appreciate him. His father sat on the board for many years, and we appreciate Ben always supporting Dixon County Schools. Thank you, Dr. Sutherland.
Next, we have comments by DCEA, Mr. Ben Rosa.
Good evening, everybody. So DCEA wants to recognize that.
Mr. Ben, can you please check up to the mic so that it's in here, everybody?
He's making you come to the front of the room regardless.
Apparently. The law can't hear you otherwise.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Ben.
It just looks like we're all staring at each other, and you're actually back there talking.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and start over. So Dixon County wants to, Dixon County Education Association wants to recognize that March is National Music and Theater Month, and in our schools, we've got a lot of awesome things going on. Next Thursday, the 6th at 7:00, Dixon County High School's got their talent show, Dixon County Middle School's got their play Trap, and that is going to be the 6th through the 8th, starting at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Dixon County Honors Choir Festival is going to be going on the 13th at Creekwood High School at 6:30. Dixon County Honors Band Concert will have a performance March 15th at 10:30 AM at Dixon Middle. Both the Honors Choir and Honors Band showcase at the top, all of the top young musicians in our county, and we hope you will be able to come and support them. Then we have in elementary, the, oh, we have a STEM Night coming up on March 13th at the Discovery School. Burns Elementary is going to be having a STEAM Night, March 13th. And then Charlotte Elementary School is going to be having a mystery reader at 5:30 in the gym, and then each grade level is going to be presenting for the upcoming grades to the parents and the students, to give them a little bit of information about the grade they're going to be going into. Following that, we want to talk about some things that our teachers and students are reporting about the different programs going on in the, in the district. And the middle school bowling team at William James and the winter guard programs of both Dixon County High School and Creekwood have both been getting tons and tons of praise from the students and staff. The Williams James Bowling Team is having a tremendous positive impact on the school's climate and is offering students another wonderful outlet for their athleticism and building a community. The Dixon County and Creekwood Honor Guard, Winter Guard, sorry, and they're supporting each other wonderfully, even though they're not really competing in the same brackets, they're both showing up to support each other and staying even if one goes later than the other. And that is just another example of the wonderful sportsmanship and exciting things we have going on throughout the county. That's going to conclude our Dixon County Education Association, good news, little blurb.
Thank you. Ben, thank you so much.
Of course.
Next, we have comments by board members.
Like I say, you know, I had a good time at our retreat. Thank you all for attending, and I know for the first, for the two, it's y'all's first one, that's the best one yet, so continue, hopefully they'll just continue to get better. And I feel like we put a lot of work in, did good things, look forward to our director getting a strategic plan, even put back together things that were added, and it was a lot of work, but it, it was the best one I've been to, and they do get better every year, and I look forward to next year's, being equal is good, so thank you all.
Don't have any other comments? I think now we're.
Well, I've got the survey monkey, and I basically said the same thing, that it could be.
It was a good meeting.
Any other comments? We're going to go to executive session now.